We don't have any good ones today, I just tell them we get types of religious religions. But if you want, please stay in line up for the place.
The ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and in the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is to approve our agenda.
Madam President, I refer the board to approve the agenda.
I need a motion. Second?
Second.
I'll better say aye.
Aye.
I will both know aye. Aye, thank you, the motion's passed. The next item on our agenda is superintendent's report.
Madam President, I have a few items of my report this morning. First of all, I want to thank our employees for all their hard work over the last two days. Obviously, it's been a different situation with the early release yesterday than the late arrival today. But all has gone very smoothly, and I attest that to the fact that our employees and students all working together doing a great job there. We've got some teachers who are here in attendance, and obviously their routines are running off at the same time they had to pitch out and help different areas of the schools. And Mr. Chase can tell you with transportation and child nutrition and all the different departments working together, it's definitely a team effort because we had to... Yesterday, we called in the buses at about 11:30, and they were ready to start rolling at 12:30. And then, this morning, we were up at 3:00 a.m. monitoring roads. We had our crew out looking at that, making decisions for this morning. And so, and then the bus drivers had to adjust their schedules. So, we want to thank all of our employees and our students for adjusting to that schedule. On the rest of our report, I've got three early graduation requests that I would ask the board to consider in executive session. We have got a very special group of students and teachers here with us today. As a former high school principal, I know how important the band students are to a high school. I was not in the band myself when I was in high school, and so as a high school principal, I was fascinated by, first of all, the hard work that goes into it, but how the students were able to come together as a group to put together such a program. Because if you have watched our bands lately over the last few years, it's not just standing out there and playing an instrument, it is a... It is a program, and it's amazing the work that they do. And I'm amazed by the programs that we have here in the DeSoto County Schools. But we have two state championship groups in attendance today. I'm going to ask our district athletic director, Coach Anthony Jenkins, to come forward to give us more information about these groups.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like Ms. Roston said, we have two outstanding bands that we want to recognize this morning, starting with our six A state champions from Hernando High School, under the direction of Mr. Liam Kielo. I believe this is his seventh year at Hernando High School, and I want to say this is his third state championship in seven years. So, if you'll come forward, Ms. Kielo, and just kind of tell us a little something about all the wonderful things that took place this year under the direction.
Good morning. I want to first thank you for this wonderful recognition for our wonderful students. This year's band Hernando won first place at the Key Store Classic at our, like, a band competition that's held here in DeSoto County at Olive Branch. They were fourth place at our first time out as Bands of America Regional Event, held in Jacksonville, Alabama. This is the... This is the first time that we had ever gone to a Bands of America event, and we had two bands there from our county that also received... That also were invited into finals, us in DeSoto Central. So, we were very, very proud of the students for that. We again received all superior ratings at Grenada High School at our MHSAA event. We placed first and grand champions of the Tennessee Band Masters Championship at the University of Memphis. And we were finally six A state marching champions here this year in Mississippi. That's our third time to be state champions. So, this is a special group to me. I've been here seven years, so every one of these students, I was fortunate enough to start. So, they're literally my very own. I would like to acknowledge the staff. This absolutely couldn't be done without them. Our first... The first one I would like to acknowledge is Ms. Victoria Jones, who is also our Young Band Director of the Year for the state of Mississippi. Let's introduce her, please. Ms. Jones is also a student taught with me, so she's like... I would also like to mention that my friend, Ms. Hallmark, is the current Band Director of the Year, who is also the Band Director at Lewisburg High School. She wouldn't tell you, so I did. I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Joseph Quinley. He's one of our Assistant Band Directors. And Mr. Kyle. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge our students. When I call their name, please come and stand in front of the board. Marion... These are our seniors in this year's band program. Marion Askew. Savannah Carden. Mallory Chesstain. Charlie Criggan. Nathaniel Davis. Kyle Eichelberger. Summer Kimball. Clea Lauderdale. McKenna Louden. Janay Malone, who also served as drum major for our band. Cooper Mates. Ashley Matthews, who also serves as drum major for our band. Brendan Means. Mariana Miller. Vincent Motzkus. Shannon O'Brien. Chelsea Ortiz. Vanessa Pinnup. Gere Sejek. Logan Shy. Zach Simpson. Sophia Suh. Bailey Terrance. Sarah Victoriano. Brandon Ware. Hunter Woolridge. And Camellia. Use the case? Picture.
You have to slide down this line, and kind of get... It's going to take several. You're going to need another line up here. Get where you can see that.
All right.
Okay, winning our second state championship in five, it's Lewisburg High School, under the direction of Ms. Kim Hallmark. You come forward, please, and talk to us a little bit about your district.
Good morning. Thank you all for having us here today. We are so excited to be here. We had a great year this year. Our show was entitled Malala, which is about the young Pakistani woman that... She was the first woman to win the Nobel Peace Prize. She wrote a book, I am Malala, and her big message that speaks out on girls' education and really educational rights for all students. And that was a message we believed strongly in, and one that we were excited to carry through our show this year. We were second place at the Key Store Classic held at Olive Branch High School this year. We received all superior ratings at Grenada, which allowed us the opportunity to move forward to our championships. That was our state evaluation. We were first place at the competition held at the Wawa Community College this year. And then finally, we were five A state champions. We were very, very excited. Our students placed first place in every category of the competition, and we were so, so thankful for that opportunity this year. So again, thank you so much for having us here. Our... My staff that is here with us today is Mr. Ben McLemore, Mr. Nelson Coyle, and Mr. Paul Morgan, and they would not come before you. We have lots of students here today, and believe it or not, they are all seniors. So, I will be forward with introducing our seniors to you this time. Kevin Araya. Lauren Colner. Fay Cox. Jenna Dancy. Hunter Dodge. Madeline Ennis. Carly Ferris. Sean Gage. Matt Geraldson. Lydia Harris. Anna Jackson. Natalie Jeffries. JT Jewer. Isaac Johnston. Colin Curran. Megan Lindsay. Kirsten Lyles. Ladarius Manning. Alexis McGeevy. Cyrus Montgomery. Davis Morales. Abby Nichols. Josh Parks. Alexis Porter. Ben Pruevitz. Nathan Royster. Jacob Rogers. Sarah Shuttleworth. Haley Thompson. Kylie Tiger. Alexis Verani. Taylor Abner. And Audrey Alvin.
Ms. Weller.
Come on. Just get... Just a tight time with four lines. Get where you can see that. Good time. Good time. This one. I have a turn up to show. It's good now. Please do. Come on. One, two, one. Get where you can see that. Move it somewhere. Square.
Great job.
Our board members and I wanted to thank y'all for all of your hard work, how you united our representatives, but also DeSoto County. We were talking about earlier, this is not just a one or two month thing, this is a year around program, but at the same time, this is what we started out there during the summer. A lot of students were not even back yet. They were out there in July, working Martin Deacon, and all that hard work paid off. And we're so very proud and appreciate all that you do. We want to thank our band directors and principals for your leadership and all that you did for our students. Thank y'all, and y'all are welcome to stay, but now would probably be a good time to exit if you don't like it. All right?
Now we're all getting tired because we know how hard they do.
We have... We're honored to have Principal John Sartre here with us today. We've got our teacher spotlight segment, South Haven Middle School. Now I ask Mr. Sartre to come forward and introduce our teacher who will be in the spotlight.
Thank you, Ms. Roston. First of all, I want to thank the board, and I want to thank you for all your help and support that you've been doing for us. As you know, we have a lot of wonderful teachers at South Haven Middle School, and it's my privilege today to introduce one of our phenomenal teachers, Ms. Ashley Riley, who is a... She's one of our AP eighth grade English teachers, and she's also our cheerleading sponsor. She came to me probably the third week of school and told me about a Disney Resort program that they did, and I kind of probably did like everybody did, and assumed, hey, this is a free trip to Disney, so everybody wants to do that. But then when she started to explain it and started talking about how it aligns with the standards that we teach for eighth grade and just what an opportunity it was, and that she had kids compete, and she's been doing it for four or five years now. They started going, and she reached out to the community last year and got a lot of community help and support, and got some donors. And I just thought it's great because they compete to do this, and then she takes a select group down to Disney, and they get to go down. And there are certain business classes and educational classes that they get to participate in throughout the week while they're down there. And when she showed me all this information, there was no way that I could tell her no, because I think it's a great program. It's a great opportunity for our kids to actually go and do so on a national level. I'm not going to steal her thunder, though, and we'll let her explain it to you a little bit better, but at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Ashley Riley to come up here and explain this to y'all.
Thank y'all for having me this night. Like Ms. Sartre said, the Disney Project is something that I have been doing for about eight years now, and it's really, really fun, and my students just have a blast working on it. They don't really actually realize the hard work that they're doing because they're actually enjoying it. I reached out to Disney, I actually literally just emailed Disney last year, and I said, here's my project, what can I do to make it better? My kids love this, I want to take it to the next level. And so, first about the actual project is during the second nine weeks, we talk all about loyalty, and all the different kinds of loyalty beyond just, I'm loyal to my family, I'm loyal to my friends. So, when we get into customer and brand loyalty, we read a book called Inside the Magic Kingdom, Seven Keys to Disney's Success. And it takes you on a behind the scenes look at what Disney does and how they maintain such good customer loyalty and brand loyalty, because everybody knows who Disney is, whether they're a big Disney fan or not. People travel to the theme parks by the millions every year, and so it's kind of neat to see behind the scenes. You kind of peek behind the curtain at all the things they do and just the level of detail and attention they put into everything, which I always thought was such a great lesson for middle school kids, to teach them that, hey, look, you have to go above and beyond, and you have to, you know, always go that extra mile because that's what's going to make you successful. So, we read the book, and then in groups of three or four, the students have to create a brand new Disney resort, and they have to create every single aspect of the resort. So, they choose some kind of Disney theme, whichever their group decides to find, and they have to design the inside and outside of every single building. They have to have two restaurants, a spa, a pool, and of course, all of these things must meet that Disney level of expectation. They also have to make an informational booklet of this that hits a lot of our informational writing standards, which tells all about the resort as well as how they've taken the seven keys from the text and incorporated them into their resort. They have to create menus for every single restaurant and for their spa. And they are competing for 10 spots to actually go to Disney to participate in the Disney Youth Education Series. And the Disney Youth Education Series is what Disney actually told me about when I emailed them last year. And as a huge Disney fan, I've traveled to Disney millions of times, and I didn't even know about this program. So, as I was reading about it, it was just blown away at what they offer to students around the country. And our Disney Youth Education class that we choose is called Managing Your Personal Brand, and it gives you a program overview. We are going to Disney's Hollywood Studios, and we go into the park before it even opens to the public. So, not only do they think that's really awesome, because they're the only people in this Disney park, they teach them a lot of really, really important lessons for our students to learn today. Social media is such a big part of their lives, and this class really, really makes them consider what they're putting on social media and how that can have an impact on their future, whether it's just applying for a job when they're in high school, or if they're actually trying to apply for college, or for a job after college, that, you know, companies are going to look at that through your social media website, and they're going to see what you're putting on there, so you may need to kind of think about those things. And just they also hit things about personal appearance when you go into a job interview, or just even the way that you come to school every day, and how you present yourself in the classroom. And those are some things that obviously 13s and 14s don't think a whole lot about. So, we... Last year was the first year we've been on this trip, and I just was blown away with all the lessons that they were taught in this class. And they take them behind the scenes on rides in the theme park, and it all ties into these lessons about presenting yourself and how you want to present yourself to employers and college recruiters, and just the way they tie everything together is amazing. I mean, of course, everything Disney does is amazing. So, they... I've never seen 10 middle school students put their cell phones away and just completely are paying attention to every single thing that they're seeing, everything that they're doing. It just was a phenomenal sight, because we all know that that cellphone is in their hand 24/7, and to see them unplug and disconnect and really learn things and connect all these things that they read in the book to all these things they're learning in the actual park was just amazing. So, when I decided who gets to go to the... Who actually gets to go on the trip, these kids are competing hardcore for this because obviously it's a trip to Disney World. What kid would not want to do that? So, I look at not only the Disney Project, because that obviously is the biggest part of it. I want to see who's really... I want to see who's really going to go above and beyond and who's really going to try to meet that Disney level of expectation. The kids also must have all A's and B's in their classes because I feel like if they don't have all A's and B's, they do not need to be out of the classroom for a week. Behavior also is a big part of it. But these kids, just the ones who really, really want it and know that they have a shot at going. I just have been blown away in the last couple of years with the things that these eighth graders have come up with. These kids, they make T-shirts that have their resort logo on them. They bring in food that is served at their restaurants and their resorts. They make special magic bands and pins and badges that all of their cast members, which is what Disney calls their employees, wear. And, you know, the extra things that their guests can buy to, you know, give them extra fast passes for the rides at the park. It just, I mean, their level of creativity and attention to detail just blows my mind. Because I set the bar high and they, I mean, I have to set it higher each year now because the bar was set very high last year when we first did this trip. And my kids this year knew that the challenge was there. And they just completely exceeded my expectations. And now the bar will be set even higher. So, good luck to my next year's kids I have to spend. So, the following slides are my winners of the trip this year. This first group created a Muppet themed resort. This group did, they worked probably a good 40 or 50 hours on this project. They not only worked every day in class, they went to the public library every single day after school and on the weekends. And just, you could tell that the work was put in. This group created a working website for their resort. You actually can go online and find the website. And I had to laugh because they, this is more school project, don't take it seriously. Because, I mean, you can click on everything, it shows you rooms, it shows you restaurants, it shows every bit of it. So, people would actually think it was real if they'd not put that on there. This group made, they all wore some kind of Muppet themed T-shirts. They brought in Kermit the Frog cupcakes. They had special little badges and pins that the whole group was wearing. Just a phenomenal job. The next one was our Disney Spooktacular Resort. They themed this after Cocus Pocus and the Night Before Christmas. And gave it a really fun Halloween twist. They brought in food as well. They all made T-shirts with quotes from all the different movies that they used for their resort. And just their informational booklet was probably the best. They just considered all of those seven keys and more when they were making their resort. And the third one was Disney's Pan Land. Obviously, it's all Peter Pan themed. And you can see in their picture, these kids had paint samples for all of their rooms. They also brought in carpet samples and tile samples and flooring samples. And just, I think loads and South Haven probably really doesn't like my classroom now. But this one, it's all Peter Pan themed. And they not only made the four different themed hotel rooms, they also decided to include the villas, which Disney is including in some of their resorts now. So, just, you know, the little things like that that weren't even required in the project. These groups just went, they went with it and didn't leave out any small detail. These are some of our pictures from our trip last year. And like I said, last year was the first time we went on the Disney Youth Education trip. And that first picture is some of our materials that we got when we took our class. We got, the brochure, the brochure is actually a roadmap with all kinds of things for students to consider as they're going through middle school and their high school years and on into college. And just some really good reminders and things that they need to think about as they're coming up on those not so fun teen years. And then, of course, we have a picture with Mickey in front of the castle. Because, I mean, did you really go to Disney if you didn't get a castle picture and a picture of Mickey? But those 10 kids, most of them had never been to Disney World before. They never thought they would ever have a chance to go on a trip like that. And we're very fortunate that the Disney Youth Education Program makes it very affordable actually for kids to be able to go. But we also had help from a lot of people. We were in the DCS newsletter, of course, and the DeSoto Times Tribune came and did a story about us. And then I was contacted by Rebecca Turner, who does a radio show called Good Things with Rebecca Turner. And I'm not really even sure how she heard about the trip. She's in Jackson and she broadcasts all over Mississippi. And she had me on the radio before we went and after we got back. And Leanne Toohey's Making It Happen Foundation actually donated about $1,500 to us to help with the trip. As well as Kent Ritchie that owns the Landers Car Dealerships. He gave us about $2,000 to help out with the trip last year. Which, for our kids, with us being entitled in school, you know, I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot of money to some people. But, I mean, this year's trip's about $740 a person. And so, donations like that from our community just were beyond helpful. And I just feel so blessed that we have such a great community in South Haven that's going to help these kids. Because sometimes our kids in South Haven don't realize they do have a lot of options. You know, they think because they don't come from any, you know, a whole lot of money, that they don't really have a lot of options when high school's over. And I think that's the biggest thing about this Disney trip and this Disney project is that it has really taught our kids that they have places to go, that they can go places and do really, really big things. And I wouldn't give up teaching them that lesson for anything because I think that's more important than anything I put my mind to in the past year. Thank you so much for your time today and for all that you're doing for us. It's great.
Mr. Pete wants to sign up. That wears a mouthpiece here. Ms. Riley, that was awesome. Great job. And Mr. Sartre, I contacted him, we schedule these a lot of times in advance. And he and I talked a couple of weeks ago and I said, look, I'd like for y'all to, most people have months to prepare for this. As soon as I called him, he said, I've got exactly the program, the spotlight and the figure of my brain. And so, he really bragged on you and you're doing a great job there. Mr. Sartre, we appreciate all that you're doing at South Haven Middle School. You're doing a phenomenal job. We appreciate that job. If y'all would like to leave this time. You're welcome to stay, as I said, but, yeah, same time, I understand. Thank y'all for coming in.
Thank you.
Great presentation. It was awesome. All right, next, please, Mr. President.
Our next item on the agenda is the new charter for the board.
I think yesterday we have a litigation matter and a custody matter that we need to discuss in the next session.
The next item we have is our approval of our minutes. I'll make the questions.
I'll make them. I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes regarding the first, 2018 board meeting.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next item of our agenda is our consent agenda. We have a for the judge. Are there any questions or can you need to ask that we can discuss? There will be no changes to the consent agenda. Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
I need a motion.
I make that motion.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. We are now into the new business of our agenda. We have bids for produce for child nutrition for DCS. Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. Bids were open on November 2nd for the purchase of produce for the child nutrition department. Bid tabulation sheet is listed in your packet. It's my recommendation to go with the lowest and best bid offered by Mr. Palazola's Produce.
Any other questions? Where is, uh, Palazola's Produce?
Why can't you just go straight to the table? Thank you.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend to the board to accept the lowest and best bid for the produce for child nutrition from Mr. Palazola's Produce.
We need a motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. Uh, next item on the agenda is architectural services for Allen and Hoshol PLL City. HVAC replacement phase two for Fernando High School and Keith Williams.
Yes, ma'am. We're requesting permission to hire Allen and Hoshol as architectural architect for the second phase of the HVAC replacement project at Fernando High School. Open to begin the project at the end of May and be done by the end of July.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the use of Allen and Hoshol for architectural services for HVAC replacement second phase at Fernando High School.
Need a motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next agenda item is permission to advertise for bids for the HVAC replacement phase two Fernando High School.
Yes, ma'am. We're seeking permission from the board to advertise for bids for the second phase of the HVAC replacement at Fernando High School.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend to the board to approve the advertising for bids for HVAC replacement second phase at Fernando High School.
Need a motion.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next item on the agenda is D, Architectural Architectural Services, Allen and Hoshol PLL City. Bus parking and drainage improvements over at Olive Branch Intermediate School.
Yes, ma'am. We're having some problems with the parking and drainage at Olive Branch Intermediate School. So, we're requesting permission to hire Allen and Hoshol to come up and plan to approve that project.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve Allen Hoshol for architectural services for bus parking drainage improvements at Olive Branch Intermediate School.
Need a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next item is E and its permission to advertise for bids for bus parking and drainage improvements at Olive Branch Intermediate.
Yes, ma'am. Just asking permission to request bids for the improvements at Olive Branch Intermediate School.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend to the board to approve the advertising for bids for bus parking and drainage improvements at Olive Branch Intermediate School.
Second. No more motions needed.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next one is L and its Architectural Services, Allen and Hoshol PLL City. Window replacement at Olive Branch Intermediate School, Phase Three, Mr. Reeves.
Yes, ma'am. We want to finish up with Phase Three at Olive Branch Intermediate School. So, we're asking for your permission to hire Allen and Hoshol as the architect for that project.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend to the board to approve Allen Hoshol for architectural services for the window replacement Phase Three at Olive Branch Intermediate School.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next one is permission to advertise for bids, window replacement at Olive Branch Intermediate, Phase Three.
Yes, ma'am. Requesting permission from the board to commence with the bidding process for the window replacement at Olive Branch Intermediate School.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend to the board to approve the advertising for bids for the window replacement Phase Three at Olive Branch Intermediate School.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next item on the agenda is new board policy, JRAA, student recruitment and student directory information. Mr. Reeves is going to be listening to it.
Yes, ma'am. This is a new board policy recommended to the district by MSBA. The policy is up for second read, it's been listed on the website and we foresee no comments.
Recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend to the board to approve the new board policy, JRAA, for student recruitment and student directory information.
I need a motion.
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The next item on the agenda is personnel, Mr. Alexander.
Same personnel packet, after new pages one through three are recommendations. Pages four and five are personnel changes. Page six is a memo, returning the licensed employee, there's only one of that this now. Is it classified employee, however, she's serving the positive behavior specialist, so they still have to receive a license, a state agency license. She's capable to take the test, I can let you know, December 28th, so hopefully we'll take care of that in early January. Page seven is a memo from Seagram, my director of federal programs. I'm the coordinator of JDC Education Services Supplement for the remainder of the 19th school year. Federal Department of Parks hired Miss Moore to replace this reporter who resigned effective November 16th. If you remember, this position is a teaching position, however, there are administrative duties that are required and are done after those hours. So, that's a probated supplement that she left, if she takes that position. Page eight is a memo from this, a memo from Nelson, Director of Leadership Development. Requesting the board approval for a $5,000 supplement. This will go to Mr. Shantz and Ms. Gosh for their work with the SYLC facilitators for 2019 school term. These, I will say, these, this funding is through donations by Homer Skelton, the Media Foundation of Northwest Mississippi, Rupert Keys, Sam Lofton, Mr. Charles McGuffey. Mrs. Ashley Simpson, put those donations towards SYLC, student, youth leadership. Page nine to 11, it's a job description for the compliance coordinator, District Disciplinary Hearing Officer. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we had the District Disciplinary Officer approved. And I said, we'd be adding a good bit of things and we're doing that now. This is Mr. Pressman, he can look at the district's compliance coordinator. Coordinator still taking the institutions for compliance, the Title of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 as well as maintain compliance with district responsibilities under Section 504, the Rehabilitation Act of 1973. Disciplinary hearing officers responsible conducting hearings for students who are ineligible and often replaced or removed from education settings for more than 10 days in the South Haven County schools. I will not read all of the new compliance coordinator job descriptions. You can see that those are all completely new, or added additions to this job.
Madam President, I recommend to the board to approve personnel askers.
All in favor?
No.
Excuse me, allow the motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it, so the motion's passed. The last item on our new agenda is student discipline, Mr. Kelly.
Madam Chair, we are doing this for a less than thirty minutes session.
I need a motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should interconnect the session for the following matters. We need to be in a connecting session for facilities, use issues, student discipline, ongoing litigation, and student matters regarding most of those.
I make the consideration motion to begin the session for those matters.
Need a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.